If you didn't hear that, to remind everybody that we are being recorded and will be the, the meeting will be sent to the cable company.
You might want to repeat the motion because I.
Okay, so the motion was made by Kathy Poonier and seconded by Rob that we start the meeting at 6:01. Okay, great. Okie doke.
All right, and yes, just a reminder, as Lee said, we are being recorded. I will be sending this to the cable people. And they're obviously welcome to come in and physically report as well. This is just an option.
So it can be done either way.
It can be done either way, exactly. So, sorry.
That's fine. I didn't know that, so you shared. It's good, okay. All right, so first of all, minutes. Thank you, Laurel, for sending them out. Does anybody have any questions or issues with the minutes?
I did see a mistake that I corrected before I send it over.
All right.
Bob was at remote and here at the same time. And I think that was the mistake.
Okay, any, any other issues with the minutes? Okay, do I have a motion to accept the minutes as presented by Laurel?
I make the motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Okay, motion by Kathy, a second.
Second.
Second, I, I realize I'm looking at stuff and realizing that it doesn't look like I'm looking at anybody, but I'm looking at the screen, so.
I know, it's a habit.
Okay, so it's moving and seconded by, I think it was Mary Lou, yes?
It was, yes.
Who's in favor of accepting the minutes as presented? Aye.
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 Do you do a roll call vote, Lee, because it's hybrid?
Uh, let's see, um, I can't see what's up there. Okay, Jan Dempsey.
Aye.
Mary Lou.
Aye.
Nancy Hurley.
Aye.
Kathy Poonier.
Aye.
Uh.
That's Lindsay.
Lindsay, I'll, I'll. Lindsay, you there?
I think her microphone is off.
Oh, you gotta turn your microphone on, Lindsay. I don't know. Can you hear us, Lindsay?
Hello, sorry, I'm here. I got it.
Yes on the minutes?
Yes.
Okay, I think we got everybody.
She, she has to abstain anyway, she was in the meeting.
Oh, she had to, that's right.
There we go.
And did you.
Who else? Oh, Rob. Rob, well, he's right here. And Laurel?
Aye.
An aye for me. Okay, good. This is very confusing.
You asked poorly.
I'm just saying, it's still confusing. Okay, uh, so minutes accepted. Um, directors report.
Okay, so do you, we want to kind of go a little bit out of order so we can take care of Bill and also introduce Bergen and then go through everything?
Sure.
I think that would be great.
Great. Which order do we want to go in? Robert Guptel collection or introduce Bergen? I mean, I think.
Is Bergen working till eight?
Yeah, she's here. She did, I mean, it'll be quick, but.
Oh, you Robert, and then, yeah.
So we can go home, yeah.
No, okay, yeah, all right.
All right, Bill, would you like to come over to the table? Yeah, so that everybody can, and then you'll be on the recording.
Then you'll be on the recording, and I mean, you'll be a budding star.
Well, I've already been on the board, so this is not a new thing to me.
So, just as a little bit of a background, Bill worked with Bob Guptel and, I mean, he is very good in giving Bob the majority of the credit, but he did a lot of, you did a lot of the tech stuff.
Well, I was with Bob when I was on the board of directors for Groveland Historical.
Yes.
And that's how we met, and that was prior to 2016. Bob had been working on the project with the, all the notebooks that you have and the data and all the other stuff that I have.
Yes.
That I've worked on. So the data plus the paperwork, and you've got a plethora of information I had never seen done quite before.
Yes, so.
And I've been doing this 35 years, so this is quite a thing that you have.
Yes.
And it's very advantageous for you to understand it because it has little codes in it. Color codes, numbers, acronyms. You have to understand, and it's a big hurdle to understand it, but it can be made easy. I was here because Darcy, I met her, oh, it's been a while.
It's a couple of years.
And, um, Bob was very interested in getting this brought to the library. So we met with Darcy and Darcy thought it was a great idea. So at this point, you have so much information that it's beyond, I can't, I don't have enough time to explain it, okay? Brochures, uh, from King Philip's War all the way to Vietnam conflict.
Wow.
This is, I've never seen, you have to go separate records to find the information, but then to put together pen to paper is difficult.
Right.
And Bob did it very well. So I am super happy to, you know, participate or help in understanding those particular things, codes. He's hired the engineers for the headstones when he was chair, and so this, this is a long-term project. And I, I bet you he'll beat Dr. Paul, Dr. Woodbury by far.
Yeah, there's several binders in, in for medium, large size U-Haul boxes, so we have a lot of information, just as Bill said. So we're going to need to figure out how exactly we want to acquisition it and make it available to the public once we can.
Uh, if you don't mind, I can't help as advocate of the background.
Yeah.
It makes it easy for me to find information or tell you or explain. And your decision to follow how you want to do it, but the information, and I'm, I'm willing to give my data. I have over forty thousand books, PDF books. And they have to do with all the military. Has to do with records, WPA, you, you name it. Forty thousand books, a lot of books.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's all on database, and I have it backed up through my server, through my external hard drives, and I have a special computer for that that has two hard drives, so I never lose it.
The data files are data files, but is the backup, the hard copy or?
I have the hard copies here.
Well, that's not forty thousand. Books, though.
No, but that's the Excel spreadsheets that Bob made. Bob was good at this.
Okay.
When he worked for Norwich and with the museum.
I guess, that's a stupid question. We, we're not asked to manage forty thousand physical books.
No, I was willing to give you the data and all you have to do is hook a client up to a server and give them reads and writes so they can't change that information.
Right.
Yeah.
Now, the paperwork is documentation from engineers who did the engineering at Riverview. And it's coded inside the data database, has angles and a promise. And it tells, if you click on that, it'll tell you what's the, where, where did it come from. Valued sources, they're not genealogy is, you're on Shadow of Doubt. Uh, if you go back to the 1600s, pretty hot, right? Okay, so it's as close as Bob or I could get it, and Bob would proof it and then he'd send it back, rewrite it, and then proof it again. Okay, so it had been proved out quite a bit.
Okay.
I think I'd like to say that we're, we're very, very fortunate that our library was the recipient of these years of, of research by Bob, and I've seen him doing it at the library at times, and it is, is very complex. And I, I am very, very honored to have him put it under our care.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I tell you, anybody, any society would love to see that work, right?
It's a lot of work. You all have to come in and look at the.
Is that the only copy? Is that, you know what I'm saying? Is there a backup to what, to notebooks?
Well, there's.
Is there a backup to the notebooks?
There's also primary, original primary sources.
I talked to Bob's son, and Bob's going to go through more. Obviously, Bob had more. Some had gone to a different place, but they weren't military. Military was supposed to be here because there, it was a larger amount. And, uh, so his son talked to me and says, look, I'm gonna still go through. I said, please don't get rid of the database online because I may lose some of it. So I downloaded some of it, and I still have to download more.
Okay.
But the Excel spreadsheet will, will show everything. It's called a technical research, which means that he covered from when he was born to the time he passed away, including his headstone, the condition, the street, the plot number. You name it, he put it down.
I didn't realize he went Norwich.
What's that?
I didn't realize that he was a Norwich University alum.
Yes, he did.
I am as well, so it's funny.
He graduated BU with his masters.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, I probably wasn't clear. I was just trying to understand because I haven't seen, I, I've seen Bob work on this and, and really is impressive. I guess my concern was just, I know it says that there's original and copies. Are those all in the same notebooks or is there a notebook of originals and then a notebook of copies?
Yeah, they are. There's actual printed out information, but the, there's also original primary sources in plastic sleeves within the binders as well.
On, I believe, if I'm
There's also.
On every, end of every page you use, you, you'll see a bibliography, and that will be your source. And, uh, you know, he, he, he can do that pen to paper so well that there, I don't think there's anything that he missed unless, um, for some reason he disappeared, that military man disappeared out of thin air, so. He cut, he covered a lot. I, I saw a few of them.
But is this something that Darcy, that if there's not a copy right at an offsite location, is it something you think we need to really have in some kind of a protected fireproof type of vault or something? You know what I mean?
I see what you're saying. I see what you're saying. I don't know, I would have to think that through. I mean, if anybody is interested in looking at it and we can decide. Because, yeah, it might not, so are there backups of the information that's typed up that's in the binders?
Not, not that. See, on.
So there's no backups.
On Excel spreadsheet, there's demographics on the Excel all the way across. Every notation for whatever relevant information he wanted to put on it. He had to actually condense it to fit it. So at the end, one of the things that I wanted to, was very interested in helping you with, just help him. I want to see Bob get that.
Yeah.
At the end, it says notebook. Now you've got to figure out how, sometimes there may be literature on it, you know, something that he wrote, or just notebook. When you see notebook, then I can go through the notebook and tell you which one. So with all those boxes, which you need to do, it should be, it's in alphabetical order. So from John Adams, who was, who I've seen his will, who was a part of this with the donation and his will, from his wife. So that goes from A, and however many volumes you have, you would say, okay, this is A to C. And then now you know how to reference. You say you need a Dewey system, so to speak.
So, so the spreadsheet is sort of like an index or a, or.
The spreadsheet, the Excel spread?
Yeah.
So, no, it's, it's particular. It's, it'll.
Okay, but if you're interested in something, you go to the spreadsheet, and you go across and say, oh, best box twenty-five, something, something.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. So they, they call this out, yeah. But there's more, what you've got in those three-ring binders is more than you can fit in an Excel spreadsheet. That's common sense.
Yeah, so may I ask a question? How large, I'm not saying like someone gigabytes, whatever, but.
Yeah.
What are we talking, what are we talking about space, boxes and all of this?
For what now? His data on itself?
Everything, everything.
If I want to give you.
If you walked in here now, gave everything that Bob gave, what, how much, is it tables worth? Is it a room's worth? Is it a?
Well, the Excel spreadsheet is not.
Right.
A, a, a serious amount, but it's, it's enough.
Right. These binders, I'm saying.
I would say three-quarters of one of the bays in the back, something like that.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So. We have space for. It's just most of the archival boxes in the back are empty. We just have a lot of them. So we, we will have space for these.
Which is good.
Yeah.
And there is.
And they're all stored in there now. I, I'm sorry, that, did I interrupt?
They're still in the boxes that Jeff delivered them in, but they're all safely in the archival space. So they're all separated from.
And that's not fire protection stuff.
Correct. It's moisture proof, but not fireproof.
No, also, um, yeah, especially you can't account for what comes from the front, so. Yeah.
I'm just wondering if there's some.
I do see Jan's point of having it in a protective, sort of.
Or at least a, like, another way of making sure we have all that information.
Boy, that's, that's hard. Even, even being in the field, I can tell you to transcribe to data. Uh, you know, with all those volumes, he does an eight and a half by eleven and a half. And the, the, the box is jam-packed.
Yeah.
It's about forty thousand. It's just that, just the work, just the work by itself is difficult. It's a task, but nonetheless, it's worth it. Kathy?
Darcy, I, the back now is all climate-controlled, but it is not fireproof. Could we look into the installers who did that work and see what it would cost to take out a, a piece of that and make that fireproof in order to store those volumes?
That's an interesting point. We also have closures, like, we have a section that is, that closes as well.
Right, right.
That we might be able to move this stuff in there and then put the binders in there.
Usually what I did with Bob's stuff, I have a safe room. No, I didn't say that. And I had two safes, and everything that I did with Bob went in the safe. That computer went in the safe. The drives went in the safe, the paperwork went in the safe. The only way to keep something fireproof, and I can tell you that, you know, at, at certain temperature, you only have so many minutes. Waterproof, it could be fireproof and waterproof. So that's an alternative, but safe so not small.
Yeah.
But it would certainly fit those volumes of three-ring binders in there for, you know, a small and reasonable size safe.
Yeah, I'll have to show you what we have because we have a couple of bays that are open, and then we have one that has a door, which at least, you know, it'll be enclosed in a steel space, which is.
Is this in addition to what we already have? Are you talking one of the same?
Is the whole new collection?
It's a whole new collection. Yes.
And so we're already working on one collection.
Yes.
And we have a, a, a model that's, seems like it's a little more sophisticated.
Yeah. Yeah.
There's pictures in there. I just want to tell you, once they're plumbers, those were not acid-free paid out.
Yeah.
And the side of the point is really about what you said, fire.
Yeah.
And water, so that seal on that safe or whatever you put it in has to be waterproof. If the sprinklers or somebody fights a fire. And waterproof, so both, they do make one that's waterproof and fireproof up to a certain time. And pretty much that's it.
Okay.
You've got to see how much volume, but.
Yeah, we'll have to look into what the.
I, I think.
Oh, G verse.
I, I think we need, need to get together, have the group get together to understand what, what this is, and then we have to size it.
Yeah.
We have to look at, we're certainly going to need additional equipment if it's going to be something accessed by a computer.
Yeah.
Do we have a computer that has the, uh, the gigabyte space, the storage space, the access, how this can. Yeah.
Yeah. Not yet.
But we have someone who knows what to do.
Oh.
Yeah. So. Who's going to be networking this.
So I, I think networking is something that, so you don't want, you know, when you're dealing about safety and you're running a server. The client can't be a dummy client, has to be connected to the server. Yeah, and you, you probably know that. Storage, uh, if you have a server that has three hard drives or five hard drives, that's called RAID. RAID means one backs up to the other in parity. So storage is obviously, if you take some of my data, like volumes, I have all of Essex County volumes. I have so many of all the Revolution, soldiers and sailors of the Revolution, I get almost everything military in data form. How big is it? If it can fit on my laptop, it can fit on your hard, on your server.
Yeah.
But we would set it up as a read-only access.
Yeah, just read only, no, no changing.
No.
Reads and writes in this way here, that data is safe because if they skew it, they're not going to know.
Yeah.
You know.
Anybody else have any questions?
Anything we can figure out right now? Otherwise, this is a good introduction to it, I think.
Yes, it is. I have a question. What's the next step?
I don't know. Not the original one, but we do have the, um, the digitization one, which this could count toward that, so, yeah, I'll, yeah. So that's what I was thinking, I was talking.
That's a warming profile, so your client is just, you, you, you log on for them. You give them a time limit, plus whatever you need to do to adjust those fine tunes from the server. And, uh, once you do that, uh, and they can only read it, they can go from file to file to file.
And what if someone wants access to the physical documents?
Well, see, you know, there's pictures in there, newspaper items, uh, some that I had found and some that Bob had found. And you can't, you, you could probably find them, but this research didn't take a few days. It took years. So I'm afraid that if something gets destroyed that he didn't type, and the fact that no, nobody is really, I'm waiting to see if Jeffrey says he has data to, to.
Yeah, I know you're, you're keen on that.
But Bob was.
Jeffrey's his son.
So, um.
We would have to have a really good, strong policy about the physical, because I've seen, uh, some of it, and they are pictures that are in plastic. They're old, old pictures. They're not replaceable. Um, it would be very, very difficult to have somebody watching over a person using the actual physical files.
Yeah, especially you'd be inundated with the time that you spent trying to find a volume and a page. And then you would have to nurse him or them. And then you've got to make sure that he's not, you know, I go to societies, I know that people have stolen things from there. So it's not impossible.
Yeah. How, how, what's Lauren's place in all this?
She's not too involved yet. She knows a little bit of the gist, but she's been focused so much on the other stuff. Um. Yeah, I mean, at her hours and pay grade, I don't think we can give her an extra local history project.
Thinking about extras is, when it comes time for access, I would think that she'd be like the person.
Well, yeah, of course, that, that would.
It could be by appointment only on, you know, the first Thursday of the month. Well, and then when that happens, a staff member probably.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, they could make a specific appointment on a specific day when.
Yeah, you know, this is not going to be just for the town.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
And if you, this was advertised, knowing that the younger generation would get involved with this stuff. Bob covered the whole town, but the people who lived in this town, some of them moved to different places or passed away at a veterans home or.
Yeah.
So forth. Um, you need somebody, obviously, to spearhead and that has some keen observation about the subject.
Okay, and it's not something that somebody would come in and sit for fifteen minutes with. They'd be doing research. It could be hours. How would we have a staff person sitting with that person for that long? We'd have to think about that and policies.
Questions on that, and, and I don't have enough time because Darcy only gave me five minutes.
It's probably going to be more, but we.
Yeah, but you have someone at Boston University that's throwing a thesis on military in the local, local area, and they stumble across the fact that the beautiful town of Groveland has some excellent resource material, and they're going to come in here.
I hope they'd help her.
They're, they're going to want to sit here for a day or a couple of days, so. Well, be open to facilitate things like that.
The congregation trip, Steve Spalding brought that stuff to Boston. So, you know, that's going to be according to importance, when the colony took precedent over Groveland, over Raleigh, you know. So, uh, I'm retired.
Yeah.
I have time. I can, you know. I, I know you like that. I won't text out the ten foot.
Too late.
Yeah.
I have it down, buddy.
Yeah, yeah, give me my number, yeah.
And it's recorded.
There's a lot, the brochures, uh, I just know, I, there's not one moment that I've seen something to this magnitude. You, like I say, I bet Bob beats out Dr. Paul, you know, he had two volumes. Woodbury, a lot of that was lost, as we know. Um, it went somewheres, and I'm not going to get into any locations. But, uh, if you can do that, these are his contemporaries. They, they, they don't, they only come around once in a while, so you don't understand that, that's not coal, that's diamond. That's really something that a lot of towns don't have. Yeah, and so.
Like you said, he did a lot on the Groveland Congregational Church.
I spent thousands of hours. Can you imagine how many hours Bob spent? You say, please don't call me out to the town, you know, so.
Okay, anything else from anybody? Anybody else, Mia?
Um, no, I think the rest of that is, you know, a lot of solutions. Call or ask for advice if, if you're not sure. I, I, I get calls from candidates to all over the United States, so I think there's a reason why, but I don't want to box here, so. But you know, if you need help, or I was thinking about it, but I'm away for vacation, if you want to call it that. I'd be willing to kind of, you know, write some notes down and, and, you know, when it's spearheaded and, and you make a decision, what you think, and I can only agree or disagree, and.
Well, it's much.
I'm not here to, I just want to make sure that.
It's taken care of.
It's taken care of, and you understand the codes, about the engineering plans. You know, the whole, and I'm friends with Rocky and Chuck up the Riverview. And anytime I need to go there, and you, this Tom probably don't know, you know why it was called Groveland?
They have contests in eighteen fifty.
I'll figure this to the apple.
It was named after William Balch, Reverend William Balch. The pines, they own from the pines all the way to Riverview Cemetery, okay? Thomas Hutcheson Balch was superintendent there. The house still remains there. So we're talking houses of military people. We're talking people who were very involved with the town. Important people. This is, this is bigger than, I don't have that time, but I certainly will give a shot.
The names alone.
Well, there were three ways. And the third one didn't have any children. So, you know, but, uh, yeah, from all the balchers in the beginning to the railroads and the stereotypes. So, you know, but uh yeah, from all the vouchers and the beginning to the railroads and the stereotypes that Bob collected and. This law. What about?
Stink Westman doing the church.
Thank you for coming and you'll be here.
Yes, thank you, Bill.
Let me know.
Thank you.
Yeah. Oh, okay. Yes, Bergen will be joining us shortly, so for anyone who hasn't met her. I think she's a matter.
Well, I think. Roland should be very proud that we get, we're getting this, this is really something.
Definitely.
Absolutely.
I think I raised the question, what's next on our pod? Good, how are you? You can't hide. And you look very telegenic today.
Oh, thank you, yes, I knew we had tonight, so I was like, alright, I will. Uh wear dress versus babies and books where I wear my.
Um, cuz she's not, she doesn't have her camera on. On a computer.
When I came back, her father said. And they just played. Yeah, yeah, it was great, got some extra steps in, so. So everyone, this is Fergan Daly, she is our new youth services librarian. I mean, is that what you wanna do?
Sure. Walk down me again. Lee Thomas. Um, what else we got up there?
Nancy?
Nancy, are you there?
Wave.
Hi Nancy.
Hello, hi Bergen.
Hi.
And oh, there's Jay. Hi Jay. You say hi to Bergen?
Hi Jay, I don't think we've met face to face yet.
Oh, and Lindsay?
And Lindsay?
Hello.
Lindsay and.
She's there.
And Bergen, and this is Kathy, you and I met one day at the library, when the, when the um historical documents were on. Came, we're looking through those with with um. With Darcy.
With me. Yes, yes, I remember, yes, nice to, nice to hear your voice. Hello, Jan.
Hi, good to see you again.
You too, please tell Carter his book recommendation has been a huge hit, the potato pants keeps flying off the shelves.
That's good, that's good, he really worked hard on that. And that was great, he had the chance to uh. Do something for the treasure box, he was really excited.
Um I think your um granddaughter who hadn't been in before, at least not when I, I met her, was disappointed and didn't understand why she too. So she's, she's gonna bring a book recommendation back, I think, next week, so I'm excited.
I think it's gonna spread.
Yes, I'm I'm glad, I want that bulletin board to fill up, so, thank you.
So to put you on the spot, is there anything you'd like to say to the board as a, as a new staff member?
Um, I just wanna say thank you to everyone for the warm welcome, everyone's been very supportive, and I appreciate that, I feel like. Some areas I could jump right into and some areas I have a learning curve, so um I appreciate the support that everyone's um giving and the patience with that. Um it's a great place to work, you have a fantastic community, I've I've met. So many wonderful families already, um who are very enthusiastic about having the programs, we have another one um. Today that I think when we, I left two nights ago, we were like, oh, there's five, and I walked in the door and Darcy said, there's nine. Yeah, um I think, as you said, word is spreading and it's a positive reception.
Good.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good.
You know, we had positive things to say about what you've been planning so far, and oh my gosh, so many people have been coming, it's. It's been so exciting. And the room looks great, like you've definitely made it your own too, which is. That you've been changing out the, the small table display and. It is.
Extending it, but I wanna make, I wanna make sure I have materials and preparation, yes, every group, so.
Yeah, no, um yeah. I mean, that's fifteen, which is.
That seems like a lot to me, but.
I mean, and that's amazing.
You won't, you won't let me drown.
You wouldn't involve in the mud pies, would you?
Well.
She read the book.
Yeah.
Well, I cleaned up the mud. She did, yeah, and it was great, it was a great introduction to Bergen, the family's got to see what she could do, and. I cleaned up the mud, and nobody came back for the mud pies.
Finger paint, um blueberries from the other day program that's still sitting, they haven't come back for those either.
Oh, my gosh.
Is anybody else on the board like to have a, have a comment or ask question?
Oh, we're just really grateful you're here, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah.
Good to be here, and please reach out if there's anything, you know, the board can do, and. For materials, I believe you can call, you know, go to Darcy. And we have money to get, you know, different money than that's budgeted, we have trust fund money and things like that, that we can. You know, like if you wanted something special, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It can be programs and materials over and above your budget, that you can come to uh the Board of Trustees. And like Laurel said, and I told you that day, we have other sources of funding that would be more than glad to uh to talk about.
Fantastic, thank you, yes, I'm starting to run ideas by Darcy as they've come up to kind of get a feel of maybe you already have it, or maybe you've tried it, so um. Um that is part of my three-month plan of um really firming up other.
You're very organized, you have a three-month plan.
Yeah, but I was in signing warrants. And you came and said, oh, and you asked, um asked Bergen, so how many did you have at your program? She said, well, I sent you. A document, email. And she opened, and this is. Children attended and what their names were, the whole thing, I'm like. Two parents, you know.
Beautiful.
It was, it was really, oh, well, very, very organized and.
Yes, that is the benefit from my last position, which I did not enjoy as much, that everything was standard. Great, I'm happy to share that with the board too, if Darcy feels that would be beneficial.
Yeah. Oh, okay. Okay, so I will continue with the report.
Right.
Um.
I, I hate to be a bugaboo here, we had this fellow. What do we do next with this uh? I mean, it's.
Um, I kind of have to, I think. Space info, I have to figure out the space first. Um, cuz that's gonna be one of the biggest issues, and then I was thinking. Um, because we do still have some grant money that is for. Digitization, and this is kind of digitization, I was gonna talk to Mike Dempsey about that, cuz I was working on that with him. And I think he'll. Have some good advice about what to. Purchase as far as equipment goes, so.
Excellent.
So that'll help, that'll do a little bit, and of course, I'm gonna start working on a policy and. Um, I do, I mean, I'm hoping that we'll be able to come to some. Good conclusions there, it might be a general local history policy with a, like a local history. Collection development policy with a section for Robert Guptel's collection. Um, I kind of have to look at what other libraries have done that have special collections.
At least for starters, we need a definition of what we have and what it is.
Yeah.
You know, timeframes and all that, I'm, I'm getting the impression it's strictly military related.
I think you should come in and look at it physically.
No problem with it.
Yes, because then you'll, it's, it's so, it's so hard to explain, but um. Yeah, it's basically biographical information separated into several large white binders. Completely chock full.
It covers a lot of the housing, and it, it's just unbelievable.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it is, it's cemetery information, which. Um. Is, yeah, it's, it is amazing. Um, so there, there are a few steps to take before we can really, really take big ones.
I'll set up something to come down and take a look.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, and the rest of the board is invited to that as well.
Yeah, yes, so that you can. And make suggestions you think would work, and I mean, even if. You don't know if you think it would work, it's good to throw out ideas, so.
Do you, um, do you want us to make an appointment when we come in to do that?
Um, I can let you know when I'll be here. Um, I mean, of course, I'm generally here, um. You know, normal days.
If it takes, if it's something that's gonna take more than just a few minutes, you know, you, you need some time, so, you know.
Yeah.
So you can plan your time.
Yeah.
Um, would it be easier for you to make a time and then a bunch of us came at the same time?
That might work.
And then you wouldn't have to repeat yourself to every trustee, I, I don't know, I was just wondering, think about.
Friday.
That sounds like a good idea.
I don't know, I don't think everybody could do Friday at one o'clock, I, I think some people. Still have activities and work.
Even if you did it twice, maybe.
I think twice would be good, we'll get, we'll give, um, you know, more of a. Off. Um hour.
Maybe when you meet uh with Mike about the digitization, you might want uh Bill Newell to also be part of it.
I think it would be good for them to, yeah.
He will be a big part of this.
Love for them to meet at the same time, so that they can. I completely agree. Um. All right, any other questions before we move on from that? For now, not completely, but for now.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so. The rest of the report, um statistics. Yes, I know, I'm gonna be reading the warrants twice, um. So the statistics on both. Were good, you could see that there were some. There were. Increases in most of the circulation statistics. Um, from July to August, um. It was mostly canopy, canopy circulation and renewals and overdrive. Um. Oh, wait. It was. Was everything, wasn't it? Um. Yeah, circulation was, was up last month. Um, we had some really good standout programming, um especially ones that um. You know, I still wanna emphasize the ones that Sue specifically planned, because of course, we. Um collaborate with other libraries on some of them, but. You can see that we're still getting numbers in the thirties and forties and fifties and the ones that. Sue plans as well, and now that we have them in hybrid, that helps. Some people who prefer to come in person, and it's been really beneficial, I think. Um even if they're just being shown on our, our screen, um they still count it as hybrid, because it's. They still come and watch it in person like it's a movie. Um. So you can see the numbers for that, and also on the topic of programming, I wanna thank Laurel. Who did the children's programming during the summer. Did amazing, she did um a five-week session of storytime, she did. Which we talked about earlier, Bergen, and they, they were great, and. I know the kids always have a really good time when you run storytime and.
I wouldn't wanna do it all the time. But I did enjoy.
Yeah.
This summer, it was fun.
Yeah, yeah.
Nice families we got, like Bergen said, very nice families in Groven.
Yeah, completely agree, so thank you, Laurel, it was very appreciated. Any children's numbers that we have are because of Laurel. Very appreciated.
Um, Bill, thank you so much, Laurel.
But we'll be, and Bergen came.
Oh, my gosh, but you know Bergen's also, you know, she had, had to do with like. Good of a mentor too, she's like, well.
What's the, how you, how they do it here.
Yeah.
You know, it doesn't have to be, that was always been done either.
Yeah, I think it's been helpful for you to, for her to talk to you, so. Um. Be the museum pass numbers, which be.
Very good.
Are very good.
Not as many in August, that surprises me.
Yeah, um though August was.
It's hot.
Yes.
Well, that's when you wanna go to a museum, air conditioning is free.
Yeah, of course, some of them were. Outside, I mean, like granted, the State Parks Pass was the second most used, which is outside. Um, but we still had good numbers for those. All right, so I'm gonna read the warrant, I'm gonna go back to August for that, to do the first set. Okay. So here are the warrants from the August report. So twenty-three oh one, the total for that was. Twenty-two thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars, I wanna emphasize that most of that was our dues toward M V L C. So twenty-three oh three was nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and thirty-seven cents. Twenty-three oh five was three thousand dollars and three thousand, I'm sorry, three thousand and four dollars and thirty-seven cents. And the total for that was twenty-six thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars and seventy-four cents. So that's for. August's report. And then. This one's report is. Twenty-three oh seven. Was eight thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars and eighty-one cents. Twenty-three oh nine was five hundred and fifty-one dollars and forty-four cents, and the total was nine thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars and twenty-five cents. Any questions about that? Okay, so stated update, the heiress was turned in, I will be turning in the financial report either tomorrow or Friday. We are all set, we met all of the requirements. Yay. Yay.
Wonderful.
Yes, always, always a good thing to hear, I think. Um, their personnel, you've met Bergen, so we kind of went over all of that. Um, we are filling a library assistant position, cuz Sherry resigned, um. Think, so, early August, early to mid-August, so. That is currently in the works.
You have any?
Is the job posted?
Actually. It's sort of. Filled, um and by sort of, I mean, it's not on the. Um. The next selectmen's meeting yet, cuz that's not posted, but actually, our page Sean will be filling that position.
Oh, excellent.
I know, he really, really was, and he's, he, you know, he's, he loves working here, and he works.
Excellent.
Yes, and I, I thought it was well deserved, so. Um. Yes, so like I said, it's kind of filled, but it's not official official yet, but it's.
We don't need to post it, Darcy, is that?
It was posted, it, it had been posted already. Um, so we went through all of the. Yes, so, yeah, um. With the assistant physician, it went through all of the, it was posted, we had other applications, but of course. Actually, Sean was the only one who applied to a library experience too. So. Even if I wasn't like. Sure, which I totally was.
Now, you have to post his position.
I do have to.
And don't you have another page that's missing?
No, it's.
Down two pages?
No, well, we're not down. So. It's fifteen hours total, and you can divide it up between two or three, right now I'm doing two. Cuz I've found that kids actually prefer to have more hours, so. I will be, I think, dividing it up. Seven and a half hours each, once we. Um, fill that one, and that way Gianna will have a few more hours, and this other person will have some more hours, and I think that'll be fair. Um, as long as everybody can work when we ask them to, which is the biggest, which is the biggest issue, of course. Um. So, that is what we have in the works. Yes. Um. Let's see, over. Let's see, over. So, you see if the. Um, so under. Yeah, so. Yeah, I'm gonna talk about that too, actually, right now, um, the carpet. So, um. I have been talking to Elm Park, but they, um. They were not quite sure about doing the, um. The carpeting and the flooring for the building unless we can, they can mitigate any moisture that's under the carpet. Which, um, might be be able to be. Yeah, um, we might be able to combat that with other ways up here rather than mitigating. So I've actually discussed this with Rebecca, our town administrator, and she's going to. Contact another flooring company to get a second opinion because we might be able to just combat that with. Either a dehumidifier up here or the. Um, turning the air conditioners to fan and just keeping it on fan. Um, because it might not actually be exactly what Elm Park is saying it is, we're not totally sure yet.
It's moisture coming down onto the carpet as opposed to moisture coming up.
It's not in the basement, the basement is only a small part, it's not completely under.
This is like on slab, right?
Yeah, but we're not totally, it might be just in the, in the library itself, we might just have. Um. Yes. So we're going to be getting a second opinion on how to combat it.
Because normally you're talking about a vapor barrier on the floor as opposed to.
Yeah.
Conditioning ventilation.
Cuz, yeah, the Elm Park was saying maybe we could do a double, blew down with. The carpet, but then we wouldn't be able to use the ones that were picked out, um. But also, if they can, they said if they can mitigate the moisture, which of course costs extra. Then we can, um, just do the carpets we kicked out, but. Um, again, Rebecca wants to get another opinion and I I agree with her, I think it would be good to have a second one.
Will we still go on with court and one of the rooms recently?
That is, yeah, yeah, so that wasn't up for, yeah, that wasn't up for any. Um. Change, I guess, it was more out there, you can see where on the floors there are seams. Kind of coming up and that even with carpet squares, they shouldn't be coming up, so.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
I I just wanted to ask, with the, all the air purifiers and the equipment that we bought with the uh COVID money. To reopen the library, doesn't that help with the dampness problem? I mean, that was a lot of equipment and it was oversized.
Don't dehumidify though.
No, I know, but I I thinking it circulates the air and would keep it.
Yeah, but it. They do get used, we print them on every day, um, it's just the, um. It's moist air circulating.
Yeah.
Well, I think it just stays. Just the way it is, it's just clean.
Yeah.
Um, that's.
So maybe Hastings can give a second opinion or?
Yeah, I'm thinking, um, well, yeah, we're gonna get a second opinion. Um. So that's, that's what's happening right now, that's why there's such a delay. Any other question? I can try to answer, um. Okay, so, on to the hotspots. Our hotspot coverage is ending September thirtieth, this is because we got the hotspots through M V L C. And they are, um, they got them through COVID money. Um, and so that money and that coverage will be running out. September thirtieth, so because hotspots were actually part of our strategic plan. And I think they have been circulating very well, I think each one has circulated. At least five times, which for having them less than a year in the catalog. I think is really good, cuz we've had ten, um, and we still have some on shelf. Pretty much all the time anyway, so I I think it's beneficial to continue having hotspots, um. So I got. So, Mobile Beacon comes very highly recommended from a lot of libraries in the state. I'm on a listserv with them and they're very good and easy to work with, they come at a discount, actually. Um, so if we were to get, if we were to, um. Continue coverage just through T-Mobile, it would be so much more expensive than what I have quoted here. Um.
Would we have to change hardware too?
I think so, but, um. I can double check with that, but I think we might have to. If we don't, then I can, um. Obviously, we could pay less, but what I would request is that this amount get approved and then. If I can go for lower, I will.
Okay.
So you want eight?
Yeah, so it would be eight, and we haven't actually needed the ten, that's the thing. Um, even with eight, I think we'll still have some on the shelf most of the time.
Well, and once the, you know, once people really realize it, cuz I don't know if everyone knows.
I know, but they they definitely, the circulation has picked up, yes, everybody. We have hotspots. Um. So that's, that's by request for, for this, I think it's been a really good program. And I think switching to this program would be that really beneficial.
And what's the cost?
It's one thousand thirty-two dollars and it, it's coverage for a year as well, so it's, they take care of all of the, um. All of the actual connection coverage.
Okay. So it's something that'd be renewable every year? Okay.
How much did you say, Giddasty?
It's one thousand thirty-two dollars.
One thousand.
What they quoted.
Okay.
And it's part eight?
Eight. Yeah.
So I make a motion to approve, uh, spending one thousand thirty-two dollars for eight, eight hotspots, did you say?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Um, out of the, um. Uh, state aid money.
Okay. State aid or?
Okay. A second from Laurel, uh, any other discussion on the topic? Questions? Everybody understands what the hotspots are, yes?
Yes, I've actually used them now.
Yeah, okay, no confusion, everybody's good? Okay, all right, all right, so it's been moved and seconded, I'll have to do a roll call again, this is money. Uh, can you put the little stuff again up?
Yeah, of course.
Okay, so, since, well, we'll start here, Laurel.
Yes.
Rob.
Yes.
Me, yes, uh, Jan Dempsey.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Uh, Mary Lou.
Yes.
Hettie Puniere.
Yes.
Jay.
Yes.
Um. Nancy Hurley.
Yes.
Did I get everybody?
Click on the screen, yes.
I think I got everybody, yes, okay, any opposed? Okay, all right.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody, patrons will love it, I mean, they already do, but they will continue to love it.
Looking for it, if they've been using it and it's like, what do you mean, we don't have anywhere?
Exactly.
A subscription, did you call it a subscription for a year?
Um, yeah, I would say we can call it a subscription for a year. Yeah, yeah, or, yes, exactly, we're a membership. Um, so I also. Um, included a little part under other about this sign, um, and you all saw a picture. Um, it says Groveland Mills established in eighteen oh four. Um, the town administrator Rebecca is actually trying to kind of, um. Decorate both the meeting space and, um. A display in town hall, and this would be alternating, it's not gonna stay there forever, but she. Would like it, um, for a few months to borrow it, um, I was thinking. Possibly, they could have her. Sign something if anybody is, um. You know, hesitant about lending an older piece of. Something that we have.
Where is it now?
It's in the back hallway.
Hanging up or?
Not hanging up, it's kind of.
Darcy sent a picture of it, you know, with with her documents.
Oh, that was on the table?
Yeah, that's the picture that I. That, uh, something, yeah, that's, I think. Um, it would only be for maybe three months at most.
Let the people know, yeah, could we put archives from the Wilton, you know, Langley Adams Library?
Possibly.
On loan from the historical collection in the Langley Adams Library.
Yeah, I mean, I think they would be in charge of how their display looks, but.
But somehow let people know that this is here and we have other things.
We probably wanna have something signed by Rebecca. With some type of a timeframe on it because things tend to float out after a while and get misplaced and people forget.
Yeah, I'm happy to do, have her do that and, or ask her to do that.
Okay, does anybody have any other questions about that?
I think it's great, but I I do agree, just to have like a one-page thing, so you both have a copy stipulating. How long it's gonna be gone and who took it and that it belongs to the library, I think that that'd be perfect.
Would be like, it would be like anything on loan from the library.
Right.
Right, it's checked out.
It's checked out, but whatever, yeah.
So, does that, is this something we need to vote on, since it's?
I don't know, I just wanted to run it by.
I understand that, yes.
Let's vote.
You wanna vote?
Sure.
Okay.
I think you need a vote, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Contract type thing involved.
So could I have a motion?
I make a motion. All right. I make a motion that we allow the town, the town administrator to borrow the Groveland Mills sign. Um, for a specified time decided between Darcy and. Our town administrator.
Okay.
I second that.
Second to Mary Lou, any other discussion or questions? Okay, roll call again, um. So, let's see, Lindsey.
Yes.
Yes, uh, Jen Dempsey.
Yes.
Mary Lou.
Yes.
Nancy Hurley.
Yes.
Hettie Puniere.
Yes.
Jay.
Yes.
Uh, let's see, Laurel.
Yes.
Rob.
Yes.
I say yes. Did I get everybody? Okay, all right.
Thank you, everyone. That's all I have.
Okay.
Yeah.
You're good, okay.
Oh, we never really go over the variants before, if you want to, again.
Any other questions for Darcy?
Uh, I just have one real quick thing, Darcy.
Yes.
Do you need money or to, um, put a receipt printer in the children's room? Do you have any thoughts of doing that?
I, yes, um.
I didn't know if there was a money issue or not.
Oh, no, I just had it, hadn't, um, I mean, I knew that was something that was. Needed, we just, it hadn't come to. My attention and time to, um. Actually do research into the recommended equipment and.
Oh, okay, okay, no problem.
There is recommended, so I wanna look at what actually works with our I L S and stuff, um, cuz I know. Um, M V L C has that, but I might be able to. Find other options.
I'm, I'm totally delighted to see a children's library in the children's room and books checked out, and I think it's wonderful.
It will help her a lot too, if she can print out a receipt, cuz that's the room where if you don't have a receipt, you're in big trouble. Because she can't find all the books she took out.
Yeah.
And kids don't take out two or three books, they take out ten or twenty books.
Right, they do, yes, I agree, our old, um, receipt printer from that room doesn't work with, um. It it's not compatible with Symphony, so.
Money, we have donation money, so.
Yes, so I will come back with that, it just wasn't done in time for.
No, that, that's fine, that's fine, I just, I noticed it and I thought I would ask.
Yeah, no, that, that's a good thing.
Okay, anything else for Darcy? All right, uh, next on the agenda, um, just a reminder to people that, uh. We, we did the last about director's evaluation we did was last October, if I'm correct, yes?
That was December.
It was December, okay. Cold weather is all the same.
Honestly.
All right. So, um. I'm gonna ask Darcy in, uh, for our October meeting, if you would present to us the. You did a preliminary document last year.
I did.
You could present that to us in October.
Okay.
And that would give us time to look it over, and we could do, then we could do the evaluation in December.
Okay.
Is that good?
Yep.
How's that sound, everybody, okay?
Sounds good.
Yeah, that's.
Doing something also.
Who's we?
December.
The board, no, I mean, not just based on what she writes, if we have.
Well, we have to see what she has.
What she has.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then based on that, okay.
Do we still have the form? We had a form at one point.
We have it, I have it in my file here.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Okay.
Send it to all of us, Mary, though?
I, I, I can't, I, um, I don't have it in electronic form, I have it in a hard copy.
Right.
So I, I would see if I could, maybe I could scan it in or something and try and and send it to you. It's the only way I can think of doing it, but it's here somewhere.
Okay, well, see, it's good, we're, we're talking about this now.
Right. I don't have it.
Yeah, okay, all right.
You don't have it, Laurel, I thought maybe. I, I have it in here somewhere, I will find it and I will see what I can do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else on that topic?
Oh, here it is, right here.
All right, okay, uh, yeah, uh.
Is this what we're talking about this, right here?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'll have to figure, I'll have to figure six pages, I'll have to figure out if I can scan it in somehow. Um. I'll figure it out, um, and then, and then if I can get, you know, scan it in and, uh, I might even have it on my, um. I'll have to check on my computer, see if I have it in books, that's where I save a lot of these documents. And if it's there, then I'll just send it to everybody.
Okay, great.
Forget, I'm gonna forget if I don't leave it out, so I'm gonna leave it out to remind me, okay. Got it.
Thank you.
Okay, good, anything else? Okay, let me just write this down so I don't forget.
And then would, that would be, when would that have to be turned in and who would collate the responses on that?
Um. That's a good question. I, I think. I think, well, I'm, so I'm, I would, I would offer it to Rob, but if he doesn't wanna do it, I'll do it. As, as vice chair, I thought, that, if you, if you, would you be interested in co-adding the responses?
Yes.
If you don't want to. One page, two page, I can handle it.
Okay.
I'm only kidding, yes, I can.
Okay. Okay, so, uh, so we'll have, so, so we'll have people directed to, once we get it all, once the process starts. Rob will be the coordinator as, as vice chair, how's that sound?
Okay, yeah.
Okay, good, all right, last thing on the agenda is the subcommittee report on, um, bylaws.
Did we skip?
Did we skip treasure?
Oh, we did, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I apologize, Mary Lou. I, I, it's in my mind, because I looked at it, and I said, well, it's done, but it's not done, because it, so thank you, Mary Lou, for sending it out, thank you, Rob.
Yeah.
Does it, does it have any?
I did, I did, um, I did say that I, that I had sent out the, um, the one for, you know, for our last meeting, that we didn't, you know, that we postponed, and, um, and I thought if anybody, you know, couldn't find it, and they wanted it, I would send it again, I could still do that. Um, but it's, um, this is the, the one you got yesterday, was the, uh, the updated one, the, the most current one, report, and, um, it is what it is, um, and it's, um, you know, nothing much has, you know, happened over the summer in terms of, we haven't had any issues or anything like that, so just to, just this report, and, uh.
Probably some losses, I would think.
Oh, yeah, 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 and it's, yeah, it is, it's, um, yeah, it's not a thing of beauty, let's put it that way.
Yeah, yeah, you know, I, we just got our portfolio report, we lost thirty-five percent so far this summer.
Yeah, 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 so it's, but I mean, the thing is, this is, um, I mean, they've got us in, in there, you know, I mean, what we have is very conservative, and
Yeah.
you know, it's, uh, I guess, it's, you know, it's just what it is right now.
Right.
And it's for the long, long, long run, so.
Exactly, yeah.
It is a long run, that's what you have to know, is, yeah.
Yeah.
It's, yeah, so.
Does anybody have any questions about the treasurer's report that, that Mary Lou sent out?
No.
No, thank you very much, Mary Lou.
Thank you, Mary Lou.
Yeah, yeah.
For reminding me, Rob. Okay, subcommittee, Kathy, do you want a report, do you want somebody on your committee board?
Well, we, uh, we met, and we had a beautiful day to meet, we met outside, um, we went over the whole, uh, section of bylaws, and Laurel sent it out to everyone, I don't know if anyone's had a chance to look at it, I think everybody, um, should go over it, and look at it, look at the changes that we've made, and any questions, uh, why those changes were made, we'd be glad to to go over, um, Laurel, do you have anything, or, or Robert?
I think it's important for everyone to look at it, to review.
Right, right.
If they.
Did people get a chance?
Any question?
I haven't had a chance to look at it, yeah.
I just thought afternoon, because I wasn't able to get, for some reason, I was not able to download this yesterday, but today, today, this afternoon, I did it, and it was, I got it, and so, um, so I haven't had a chance to read it yet, because it was, it was late by the time I got it, so I'll have to, you know, look at it, you know.
I, I, I think it's important for all the trustees to read it and to understand.
Absolutely, and, and we started it early, so.
Yeah, maybe this should be the first agenda item for our next meeting to.
Good point.
To discuss it.
Yeah, we tabled, tabled for the discussion until the next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
We spent, uh, I think close to two hours, or maybe more.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, about three hours, trying to get a Google Doc.
Yeah, but you got it.
To you, and not to the board. Do this, because it was a Google Doc.
Yeah.
And I don't do Google Docs, but I figured it out. I should come for tech support sometime.
Anybody else on the board have any questions for the, of the subcommittee?
Oh, okay.
Well, good. Okay, uh, also, since this is, um, a public meeting, I, this should be an opportunity, is there anybody from the public watching who would like to make any comments? No? You good? Okay, other, anybody have anything on the other?
I, I have a strange item.
Okay.
I was at a cookout with my sister, uh, two weekends ago, and she's a retired librarian for Newton South High School.
Oh, okay.
And she asked me a question which completely blindsided me, because I should have been aware of it, based on what's going on in the political sphere. She wanted to know if we ever had any requests to remove a book from the library, and if we do, what is the process for handling that?
Okay, so we, um, do have a policy for it, and a form if people need to fill that out, um, but ever since I've been on staff, we haven't had anybody try to remove anything, we, but we do have a policy that we are prepared for, I've actually been starting to actually relook at it, because the directors have been talking about.
Places.
Yes, uh, every, all the places, all the directors have been talking about what, you know, to protect ourselves, what we want to actually say in it, like, say, you know, maybe we specify someone from Groveland can make these requests, or someone in Massachusetts at least, because we do legally serve Massachusetts with our materials, rather than someone from some random state, you know, asking us to remove, you know, Catcher in the Rye or something like that, so, I, um, I've actually started relooking at it, and I might edit in some things and see how the board feels.
So it's on our radar.
Yes, yes, thank you for that.
Some years back, I forget who it was that was the assist, it was an assistant directorship at the time, and she did a fantastic program, some of you may remember, um, on banning books, and she actually got a fence company in Groveland to bring in sections of a chain-linked fence, and ropes, and chains, and tie it around, and put all the books that have come under question, such as Catcher in the Rye, and many other books, and put them in there, and it did wonderful, brought so much conversation to the library, and we had a whole program on it, and this is America, and we don't ban books.
Right, right, and, you know, it's part of the ALA Bill of Rights for, for censorship, so.
We don't brand books.
Did that answer your question, huh?
Yes.
Okay, anybody else have anything on the other? Okay, good, then I guess, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move that way.
Motion for Rob, a second?
A second.
Okay, I don't think, I don't believe you do the list, anybody opposed to adjourning? No, okay, they were good. Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Thanks.